Thank you, Dr. Callum, meeting order, and thank you all for being here this evening. And we have, as typical, several things to look at. And the first is Habitat for Humanity. And Vijay, do you want to come up and sit at this table? Would you mind?
I am Carl.
Carl, excuse me.
This is right out of their website.
Okay, Vijay. Okay, I'll keep them for the other four members.
Okay. If you all wouldn't mind just identifying yourselves then too, just to get started.
I'm Vijay. I'm from the Housing Authority. And Noel is also over here. So, we came, last time we came to you, and the purpose was to bring our Housing Needs Assessment Plan, which was completed by P E P C. After that, we went to Planning Board, and the Planning Board also reviewed the plan, and they approved it. At this time, the plan is with D H C D for state approval. And once we get the state approved, then we will become appeal proof in terms of any 40B requests coming. So I think, as you've seen in the plan, now, according to 2000 census, you know, we have, we're supposed to have 201 units of affordable housing in the town. And inventory as of today is 44 units that we have. So we are 157 units behind on that. The plan makes us appeal proof, but it also requires us that every single year we add at least 5%, .5% of total housing stock into our affordable housing inventory. And that comes to approximately 10 units every single year, which is impossible to do that, because, you know, we have maybe a total building permit given out every single year is amounts somewhere around 20 to 40. So having 10 units every single year would be almost an impossible task. So our Housing Authority, we have been talking about making honest attempt to reach at least certain level, not to stay at 44 units, which we have in for a number of years. And Housing Needs Plan clearly shows that there is need for affordable options in Southampton, especially for our elderly and for our younger generation living in Southampton. And our attempt is in two ways. One is that how can we meet, how can we make, you know, go towards this requirement of 10% of total units to be affordable housing in Southampton? How can we go slowly towards that? And the second thing is that how can we keep families together? Because we're seeing that, you know, elderly population we have and their houses, they're not able to maintain those houses, and they don't have options available within this town to, so that they can, they pay taxes for their life, and how can they maintain their connection with this town and stay over here to have some affordable option available for them and for our second generation also?
Yes.
You know, is that it's very difficult for children who grew up in Southampton to stay in Southampton independent of their parents and maybe live close to them, but be able to buy a house that's not available. So we're looking at ways that we can provide some affordable options for this and families who, you know, we've been fortunate to have, have the opportunity to live over here, and our kids go to school and everything. But there are less fortunate families out there, no fault of their own, they're not able to do that, so maybe providing some options to them. Low by low, how can we do that? And to make an honest effort, you know, we connected with Habitat for Humanity Pioneer Valley. It's a reputable organization, and we, two months ago, we went for a meeting with M J Adams, who is Executive Director of Apollo. And they gave us tour of houses that they have built in Northampton. And we learned about how they do their work, how collaboratively they work with Town Department, how collaboratively they work with neighborhood. They have volunteers coming in and volunteers doing all the work. They make the family responsible for it. It's not a free thing. It's a mortgage, 0% mortgage that families who see. And they also have to do some volunteer work to be part of that program. And we saw all those things, and it was very impressive. We thought that in Southampton, maybe a small effort that we can do, maybe bringing Habitat would be much more receptive than anything else. It is not going to be, you know, it's not going to meet with the total needs that we have, but in little way, it will be possible that with collaboration with them, we will be able to at least meet, go in direction of that. So that's why I wanted to call M J Adams to be here, and maybe we can talk a little about how Habitat works, you know, the building materials and donation and the help that they provide after a house is already occupied by the family. There is one year that they provide financing counseling and everything, so they make sure that, that the family is not going to have any problem. And if there is any problem, then they can help them resolve it. Carl is going to talk about all those things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vijay, for the great introduction to Habitat for Humanity. I'm certainly aware of the organization as a 501(c)(3). I believe it's nationwide, isn't it?
Internationally.
International even, more than nationwide. Okay, that's great. So I'm sure we have some questions here, and then maybe some questions from the other folks in the audience too, but.
I'll make a sort of introduction. I'll focus on the first steps that Habitat does, and interrupt me if there's something else you want to know, and if we want to talk about the end of the process, we can do that too. I'm the Chair of the Site Committee. We have, I think, 10 committees, all volunteer chairs. Mark Reed is here with me also as a Site Committee member, and he's local and, I think, a specialist. And one thing we're likely to need if we can find a project, a site in Southampton, which is septic issues and so forth, because to date, I don't believe we've built a site that didn't have a sewer, although we've looked at a few. I think the quick reason why is it's not something you can easily do with volunteers. But I'm hopeful there are other funds we can find, and maybe we can find a site that already has a septic system or something. Starting with Habitat, you probably know it from Jimmy Carter and so forth, and mission is to, you know, house the people. And what, what makes us a little different from most groups that do affordable housing is we focus exclusively on ownership housing. And around here, that means one and two family homes. By around here, I'm speaking of Pioneer Valley, that's this Habitat. We're an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity America, which is affiliate for Habitat for Humanity International. Our international involvement, all American habitats contribute, I should, I think it's 10% of their total budget to foreign houses built in countries. And sometimes they have, they pair them with other countries, and ours is Haiti, as a matter of fact, I think, for Habitat. And often our volunteers go off, go and do work in Haiti, or we've done some other countries too, one in Africa, it might be Tanzania, but I'm not sure.
Tanzania is listed here in the description.
We use volunteers for almost everything. We have a paid Executive Director and some Vista and other office staff. And the biggest shortage we typically have is site foreman, and we sometimes pay them, try to get grants to cover that. But let's talk about how we get our houses, or let's start our history first. I think the early 90s is when it started, and we were managing to build a house every other year or so. I started volunteering in 2001. About then, we were building a house every year. This year, I think, we'll complete three, which will be our most yet, and our goal is now four a year. And the first part is the part that falls in my bailiwick, which is finding a site. Most of ours are donated to us or sold for a dollar, most often by towns. I think we've worked in five or six towns in Pioneer Valley, which we define, by the way, as Hampshire and Franklin Counties. And Northampton, I think, has given us the most. Whenever they have a site, their more affordable housing is one of their goals. It's partly to keep up with state law that Vijay was telling me about, but it's also, you know, they have the same issues that children having to move away and so forth. And Northampton is seeing property values rise quite a bit, so they have needs. Now, the sites they give us all have lots of problems, so I'm optimistic about Southampton because one thing you've called us is supposed to us calling you. And I know that town was one of the first to have a CPA act, and that shows an interest in doing something for affordable housing, and so it's a good sign. We also receive donations from private individuals, from private colleges, at least one from UMass. We are in the process of buying the first site that we've bought since I've been involved, but we're getting, it's two and three quarters acres, and we're only paying $10,000 for it up in Montague, buying it from the church, Catholic Church, the bishop of Springfield, actually, so it's mostly a donation. Normally, we haven't had to pay for sites. That one is costing us a lot. There's supposed to be four houses, but we only have approval for one at this point. But we're working with Franklin Tech, a local technical vocational high school, who will do a lot of the building during the week. Our volunteers tend to build on weekends, so that's a good fit for us. And we finished two houses in Turner's Falls with them about a year ago. And they were, they really liked working with us, and we liked working with them. And so we're desperate to get a house in sort of driving range from Franklin Tech, so that's why actually we pay for a site. So the idea of this scenario, I'd like to stay in Southampton, is maybe the town owns a site, but your tax foreclosure could just be surplus property somewhere. And Vijay has started looking at the sites, and Mark is qualified to look at them and help us figure out if it's one we can handle. And then, if it could, the next step would be to get it approved, and that would be my arrangement, to work out how to acquire it, what has happened in Northampton, and is likely to happen in East Hampton, and I think, maybe what's in Belchertown. The town wants to sell, give it to us or sell it to us for a dollar, and to sell it for other than the highest price, the Select Board and other officials have to decide that it's surplus. I can't tell you the details of how that's done. And then usually put out a request for proposals, and other affordable housing groups may propose as well, and, you know, if they can do it better and quicker than us, we don't have a problem with that. But if, most of them don't do ownership housing, usually it's rental, nothing wrong with rental. Habitat's philosophy is that we're really sort of taking typically families who would never have a chance to be homeowners, kind of putting them in the middle class. And we do it by giving the home that they, we know they'll be able to afford, it's a good, new quality home. It also helps us address what sometimes starts as a problem, and that is some opposition from neighbors. People don't always want more people moving in next to them, or even into their town or something. And Habitat Partner Families, I'll talk to them in a minute more about how we select them, are indeed low-income people, typically 50% of median, and I can look up what that would be in this area.
Median is 61 here.
61, yes. So for a family of four, I think for Pioneer, I think it's a broader statistic than just Southampton. I'm pretty sure a family of four would have to earn under $40,000 a year. But, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're talking about the, the selection process.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, let's, oh, the, the, the NIMBY impact, yes. Habitat Partner Family is a low-income family, but in fact, they have a very value blast, and that is a new house that they've worked on, they put in some sweat equity, they have a mortgage that they're going to be able to afford, we know that because we price it so that they can. They probably never had a chance to be homeowner, and now they will be, and if they can pay a low rate mortgage and get involved in the community, and to the good they already are, you know, they're going to sort of realize the American dream. And the way we would start, when we have a site, the family selection committee, and they sometimes jump ahead, they're, I've already got a family picked for my project, next project in Montague, and we don't have the approval yet that we need, so I'm worried about it. But the family selection committee would hold information meetings, in this case in Southampton, and take applications, and anybody earning 50% of the median would apply. Generally, there's some geographic self-selection. A family in, in Belchertown probably is not going to up and move to Southampton, but, you know, it's open to anybody in our two-county region. We interview anybody who is qualified, and the family selection committee does. And we, they submit lots of papers documenting their income, and we, we need to know that they can, if they're not earning more than 50%, that they're not, that they can afford the house, they have to have a source of income. Typically, it's a job, sometimes it's subsidies from other sources, in the case of disabled individuals, which they can make the mortgage payments. We then build the house using a lot of donated materials, almost entirely volunteer labor. Sometimes we have to pay for specialized trades, but all the professions, you know, architecture and lawyers and things like that, we always manage to get them for free. Things like a septic system, you know, we might look to CPA money or other sources if it's something we can't do with volunteers, and it sounds like it might be. And basically, the house is sold for the cost of the materials and what we have to pay for. And in the handout, there is a, I think, 2007 document, which talks about any $85,000, I think. There are more than that now. I think it's like $130,000 to $30,000 these days. We figure out what they can pay, and basically, they put a few hundred dollars down, they put in at least 250 hours of sweat equity. If there are more adults in the family, I think each one of them has to put in a certain amount, that's the bill that handles that. And we can space, it's a 0% mortgage, we're basically paying just a little bit of it each month, no interest, over 20 or 30 years. So we usually have a minimum of 20, we can stretch as long as 30 years if the, if the income requires, if that's all they can afford, basically. The 30% includes taxes and insurance, but not utilities. Sometimes you'll see a 33% or 34% number, and that usually includes utilities. So we make it affordable that way. The most common family, it's almost always family with kids, but not always, just because they tend to be more competitive on the income of things. There are often single mothers. They're very often teachers. We have a recent adjunct math professor with a master's degree at Greenfield Community College, and just moved into house. We have another teacher, father is a teacher, mother is a homemaker with two kids, who I think had moved into one in Turner's Falls. But, you know, that's, and we've had disabled adults with, and one, one family with a disabled adult, and his parents were providing on support. The family selection committee brings them to the Board of Directors, who makes the final selection. Previous families that have, you know, not been selected can submit again, but it starts over each time. They're assigned a mentor, usually a good year before they start. We have two mentors currently, up for the next one either, there's a retired minister and a retired teacher who are likely to be assigned to him as a mentor. It takes us a year to build a house, actually, usually more than that, but we're working hard to get it quicker. And during that time, they're involved in the selection of the house. Typically, we start with a plan book design, and I brought a, this is, by the way, the, did you test that out on this? That's a picture of the project, Vijay visited in Northampton, the one here, that looks like a duplex, but it's actually a zero lot line or party ball house. But that's not really that realistic for Southampton, I think we're probably talking a single family. So this is a typical plan book house, I have more of those, but that's not it, that we might start with. And the Habitat Internet, America Plan Book has, you know, that fully detailed, there are any great things to pass out, but you know, you could almost build from this. But we adapt, and first, the Site Committee members, everybody, Vijay too, figures out what the family needs in terms of bathrooms and bedrooms and facilities. They're pretty modest houses, usually around 1,000 square feet, two or three bedrooms are required. It's then adapted for the family, and then the Building Committee adapts it to the site. And all that time, there's this mentoring relationship, and people, these people learn and are coached on what it will take to be a homeowner. And then when we get it built, we have a grand opening ceremony and a house warming and all this kind of stuff, and then they're, the mentor stays with them for at least another year, getting them used to homeownership. And by that time, usually it's working out well, they're well absorbed in the community. Our mortgage performance is very good, we have very few defaults. Occasionally, people have lost jobs or been injured, and we can forbear the payments for a few years, and we had to do that in a house up in Orange when a guy was injured on the job. And I think after two years, he's now has an income again, and he's continuing to pay his mortgage at the same 0% rate. You might want to ask about the, how do we keep it affordable? And we have a, a right to buy it back, and according to a formula run by the Federal Home Loan Bank, that is required if you want, if you want to use a house for 40B. And virtually, whenever a city gives us a site, that's what happens. In the case of Amherst College, they gave us sites for houses, about, we're building the fourth one now. I don't think that requirement is on there. And so those families, I guess, may be able to sell their house after 20 years. We have a, in that case, we have a recapture provision until the mortgage is fully paid off, but the ones that are, count towards 40B, we have the right to buy them back according to the formula, which we have done, I think, once. And we resell it, basically get a new partner family, by the same procedure again, except enough to build it this time. And I don't know what, how those fam, what the family took it over again, they did let the sweat equity, because we're very serious about the 250 hours of, of work. And maybe they worked on another house or something, I'm not sure about that. Why don't I stop there and ask for questions? Mark, do you want to add things to this?
I get the, for the speaker.
Yeah.
My name is Mark Reed.
Yes, thank you, Mark.
Brickyard Road, and I worked with Carl one other time a few years ago to try to have a house built where the old range was located here. And, you know, I feel that it's a great program, and it would be an asset to the town, and so I volunteered to assist, to, to try to do some site evaluations, because, you know, like Carl said, one of the biggest obstacles is going to be sewage disposal systems, septic systems. There are sites, I think, that could be available, and we need to work with Vijay and the committee to come up with a good site.
All right, so then, from your perspective, actually, one question I had from the business, I know you're a 501(c)(3), but if you are holding a 0% mortgage, how do you handle your administrative costs and all of those, and opportunity cost and those things? Sort of a technical financial question.
Right. But we, we, we have no debt.
Right.
Or normally we don't. So we, when we complete the house, we've used, you know, purchased with funds raised through fundraisers, you know, we have a fundraiser, you know, we're probably selling a house that might be worth $200,000 in the market, we're selling it for probably more than that with land, so, for $920,000, that is 0% mortgage. And a significant part of our operating budget is the repayments of those mortgages that come in, because we've already put in all, the labor's all been donated, the materials have all been donated or bought, you know, we have, we have no carrying or construction interest on that.
So you have a zero capital base in the house, then, when you start a mortgage?
Effectively, we do. I mean, it's all been donated since, we have zero capital cost in the house.
Right, okay, sorry, just a technical question.
Yeah, that's right.
First thing my ass, that was a little bit.
The fun, you know, one reason we're optimistic about Southampton is we haven't done anything near here, even in East Hampton, you know, and we really should be over here in the west part of our territory. And Mark, and the fact that Vijay called us and stuff, gives us reasonable, there's, there's people who would do, who would work with us here, you know, we would hope to find a lot of local volunteers. I don't know that we have too many Southampton people coming to our job sites back in Northampton, which would be the closest ones. But my guess is there are people here who would want to work with us. We have a faith relations committee, not that we're particularly a religious group, but we, we find churches are one good way to muster volunteers to come on sites, and they have, you know, house raising days and build days and stuff like that, and they, Sunday afternoon service, everybody gets together, I think they can make work on a house and stuff like that, and that's a good way to get things built. And when we get one, then we get another, and we get, you know, Mark will be the only local guy in the committee, we'll have a few more and find our next site at once.
I think they, they get schools in North also, local schools, and they want to collaborate a little bit about Smith Folk and.
Yeah, we have.
Local schools.
Yeah, the Northampton project, that one in that color picture there, has been significantly built, the one house is done by Smith Folk High School's program, Smith Folk, Smith Vocational Schools' construction program. And they have electric and a few things. And one in Turner's Falls is built by Franklin Tech, I think, I mentioned that one, that was at Welbourn's. Most of our work is on weekends, most volunteers on weekends, and the school is obviously working during the week, so we can keep the site busy most of the good season.
Okay. All right, so again, from your perspective and Carl and others, how would you typically perceive then? Obviously, this is your first time, we appreciate you coming in, and Vijay, we appreciate your getting in touch with Habitat for Humanity too, on behalf of the Housing Authority, because we do have to oblige 40B, of course, and we're happy to do that as a town. But what would be the next step?
Next step from, that I hope will happen is that the Select Board will to some extent endorse this. Vijay has already put together a list of, unless we do, I'm not sure, of, of town-owned sites.
That I have received a list on a regular basis from Diana. And just, we, part of our meeting, you know, we do review what are the town-owned properties, and also what properties are available for sale, when, and single-family houses are available for sale in Southampton, how the market is going, we review that.
I think, I think the Vijay's committee yesterday looked like a long list, although they'd already thought about it, and probably nine tenths of them aren't really like the candidates. But, so there's three or four that are. And my hope is, with your endorsement, Mark will look at them and, you know, give his professional judgment, can we make this work or not? And then, next step would be for the Select Board to decide, this can be surplus? I mean, you, you, you have probably the option to sell these for a lot more money than the dollar that you get from us, you know, and town budget has to reflect that, you know, that's a decision you have to make, and we'd like to make this affordable ownership housing or not. You know, East Hampton got us a doubt about all the ways on this one, and said, you know, actually, we got a hole in the budget, we think we can sell this, it was an old gas station, it's got a lot of other problems, but we think we can sell it for $65,000, that'll fill our hole, you know, thanks but no thanks, you know, and that was probably the right decision for them. But that's where I think your sort of executive action comes in first.
Well, this time, we are requesting some input from you, guidance from you, you know, how, this is the first time something like this has been introduced in Southampton, are we going in the right direction, what guidance you have for us? The next step for us is that to evaluate site and see if there is any people living up, building a small house like that. And first step would be to see, evaluate town-owned property, if there are any non-income-producing properties that we have, been sitting there for a while, and it could be considered for Habitat House, so we can start with the process of, you know, with Mark's expertise, to go over to those sites and see if there's a possibility of that. And the next step would be coming is that whether, you know, town is willing to donate that, and that is in future, not, you know, at this time, we really need to see, is that do we have any sites in town-owned properties, do we have any sites we could facilitate a little house to Habitat? If it's not there, then we're going to have to look outside and use CPA funding that we have to buy, but that's, that's in future, I think. And this is what, very initial stage that we are at this point.
Okay, sure. So just looking forward a little bit then, from a tax revenue perspective, to the extent that the houses that you provide, roughly 1,000 square foot house, in future tax rolls will contribute, you know, presumptively less than a house that says, you know, $300,000.
That's right.
So I think part of the presentation would include then, this land is idle right now, of course, and as you know, time zero money is worth more than money received in the future, of course, too, so that might be something. I also frankly would like to see an amendment to 40B such that, to the extent that we do have low-income. to the extent that we do have low-income housing, that we get some 130% tax credit or something like that. You know, some, some arrangement, which I think would be another economic incentive throughout all of these things. In any case, I don't, conceptually, from my perspective, I think it sounds a very good idea. But I think obviously the board would need to discuss this. And we're short two members tonight, regrettably, two people who had prior commitments who just couldn't be here. But I can certainly say that we will take this up as a board and discuss it and continue the dialogue with Mark and BJ. Diana, do you have any comments or thoughts or questions?
Well, I think all of us have heard about Habitat for Humanity for many years. I think it's a, from my perspective, a wonderful thing that we're trying to, you know, get for this town. I think all the, the idea of the town needing to find the sites and be able to kind of do a cost-benefit analysis, because we're in really pretty deep financial sprays in most towns. But I think Diana can help with that, us too. She can, you can talk about the properties that, you've probably seen a list of them. Some may be developable, capable of development, and maybe some really wouldn't have been that big a tax income. So, I mean, I would imagine we could, we could, I would like to work, speaking for myself, I would speak for the board on this.
Mike, do you have any comments or questions?
We've got to move ahead on affordable housing, so it seems like, yeah, we haven't got a choice.
This seems like a really nice way to do it from many different perspectives, you know. One that's, it's a known way to proceed and, and, you know, it's kind of a warm, fuzzy way to enter the process during what we need to do.
And truth be known, then anything we lose by this lack of sale of the property technically, we would get it back over time through taxes on the property.
Yeah, well, yes, if you can compare it to leaving it idle, then that's.
It's like leaving it idle, right.
Compared to selling it to the private market, you know, I don't want to contend with.
So just one other operational consideration too. You've mentioned Montague, which we all know is fairly remote, and Veltzer Town is, you know, a hub. But out here, we don't have much in the way of public transportation, which has been a deterrent for a lot of things here. And I wondered if you'd run across.
That's sort of one of the things we look for. We have a site selection checklist and a bus route is one of the things we look for. All of our families have had, who have cars. I know this because we always ask, shouldn't you be building garages? And we've sort of decided not to. Some people have added garages. No, they added sheds. I may be wrong about that. People do need cars to get to their employment, even, you know, the sites we have received are not really in town. I know that Turner's Falls, I shouldn't get that back. But they, everybody has cars so far.
We have run up against this with.
Yeah, I can see that's, that is an issue. And, you know, a family, but that's another self-selection factor. I believe somebody who doesn't want a car.
I have a question. I thought I knew a bit about Habitat for Humanity. I didn't really know that, it says nonprofit ecumenical Christian housing. Is that, is that part of your identity? I mean, that was just a curious fact that I had.
The Pioneer Valley Habitat makes very, very strong point of being secular.
Because always your Habitat for Humanity really.
Right, well, the one, the headquarters, the US Habitat in Americas, Georgia, was definitely founded by Christians and they consider it a housing ministry or something like that. Myself, I avoid that kind of stuff and they go out of their way to make sure that people like me and professors at Amherst College and so forth don't feel in any way excluded. And many of them, and it's certainly not remotely a factor in our family selection, for instance, that we have two or three units which have been, where the partner families are, Southeast Asian refugees, probably Buddhists, but I don't think we know that for sure.
So that was the, that's sort of one of the founding, probably the kind of founding principles.
But, you know, the international works in, you know, Muslim, Muslim countries. Certainly India, a lot. I did a Habitat build in Borneo, sort of, you know, for two weeks with my son. And we, you know, port conflict and stuff basically. And that family was practicing indigenous, which is Borneo. So it's not a factor at all for who we select, but it is our past.
Just.
And we have the faith relations committee. Churches are very helpful for finding sites. We're buying this one and the next one in Montague from the Catholic Church.
Probably finding sites and getting volunteers.
Yes, both.
All right, wonderful. Any comments or questions from the other folks in attendance? All right, well, it sounds like we have been, I appreciate all of your time and efforts here. BJ certainly for reaching out to Habitat. So we will obviously take this matter under very close advisement and stay in touch with yourselves. And we thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you. Keep BJ pushing on this. We'll get something sooner rather than later, I think.
BJ gets things done.
He does.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, thanks so much for having me. The next is Camp John Rhodes, change of manager. And the original forms are in the signature folder. John Association. It's an association.
Been there since God greeted the pond.
Which was certainly after the.
Around 1900, basically.
Okay, so, this is.
And there's a gentleman here from Camp John, too, if you have any questions.
Are you Mark? You're going to be the new or the departing?
No, I'm already, I'm on the board of directors of Camp John.
Okay.
And the previous manager has gone to Florida and it's very difficult. This is a very time restricted application, so when November comes, I usually have to send it to him. So our board of directors voted to have me become the new licenseee.
Okay.
And then just, we need to do that because it's just very difficult.
And you've been co-managing with the previous manager for 10 years, Michael?
Yes. It's been longer than that since.
Okay, all right. And I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what you do down there in the association. I went to dances there.
Camp John is part of the oil turners. And their motto, they have a national organization, US National Turners, and they're strong minds, strong bodies. So down there, we have the beach and, you know, people swim and stuff. They used to have volleyball. They used to have gymnastics. You know, things evolved over the years, but the Club of Turners have basketball courts, bowling alleys in their building down there. This used to be a summer camp after, before winter. And they, yeah, when things evolved, it got a little better up there, so they decided to leave it open all year long. You know, so during the winter time, there really isn't much going on there. But we do have children's Christmas parties and Halloween parties. And, you know, if an organization needs to use the hall, we generally donate it. And as a matter of fact, culturally, on Sunday nights, we have a big hand practice there. I haven't been in it. But, you know, we have a lot of cultural stuff going on.
Sure, okay. And you do have a liquor license down there as well, so this wouldn't.
Well, that's what.
Which brings us to the point, is the chief aware of the liquor, you know, just in case there's been problems? I know that, I don't think.
Change of manager. Yeah, I'm not sure about the change of manager, if he's aware that they're asking for that. But that's not really an impact on our.
An alcohol club.
I just want to make it happen. Managers can change every year here. We have a vote every year for board directors in a lot of places. You know, you hire a new manager, you have to replace him. So we choose to have a board of director on here because we won't have to give this change consistently every year. But I can fire, you know, our steward or whoever, you know, at a high level.
It's just a question we ask anytime, especially with the liquor licenses. You know, just if the chief's having problems, then let's hear about it now. And while there's a change of managers or a change in the licensing, let's get it ironed out. But just before we go down the aisle, I'd like to have him weigh in and just say, no problem.
Yeah, we try to comply with, because I know the private department comes in, inspect before we can get this approved. The building inspector, so we do whatever we have. And then our insurance companies probably interfere in than that. You know, they came in and get whatever they want.
All righty, he should be here in just a minute. You said you're in the band, the Camp John Band?
Yeah, it's actually the Jack Pauls Wingband. We asked our board, and of course, I'm on the board, so whether we could.
You asked yourself?
Yeah, well, I had to have permission to use the line one.
What instrumenter?
I play alto sax.
I was going to say sax.
We have a 16-piece.
Chief, thanks for coming in. We have in front of us here a signature form for the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, which would result in formalization of a change of manager for the Camp John Association. And we wondered if you had any history of experience down there, one way or the other, any incidents?
Yeah, I can't recite any specific problems we've had, you know, in the past year or two. I think that they've maintained a pretty good place there.
Okay, all right, great. So we'll take that as your tacit approval of this. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do want, I do try, if we ever had, we had no problem there. I would be one of the first ones to shut the place down. But, you know, any trouble, we escort people out of there. We, you know, we've had to call the police on occasion, but, you know, we do not tolerate any issues down there at all.
Okay, move to sign the change of license.
Second.
Those in favor? Okay. So we all sign this, Diana?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, chief. Thank you, Michael. And good luck down there and good luck with the band.
Good if you stop by on Sundays.
Okay, and the next item, the town administrators report. There was just one item. I'm sorry, we have a bill warrant here.
Approved minutes, ten minutes?
Uh, no minutes, it says. No minutes at this time. We have a bill warrant, the amount of, I'll just read it, $93,210.10.
Second.
In favor? Okay, town administrators report.
The only thing I have is the keying for the layer. We talked about this briefly at our joint meeting with BRC on Thursday. So, as you can see, I created a matrix just to show, to demonstrate to all the doors that will have locks on them. So it's not as simple as we had originally talked about. Every, you know, every corridor has a double door or a single door that can be locked. The men's, women's rooms, the staff work room, board of house, all the offices, conference rooms, the meeting rooms. The senior center has, looks like about 12 doors.
Why don't we start off with the premise that we want? We're asking, one of the things you have to ask for from the contractors, the number of keys.
There's only one key. See, the issue is that it's a core system. So each person, the goal is, and I'm hoping Ed can expand on this, because I'm not totally sure about this, but is that you only have one key. But your key opens all the doors that you've identified for that person.
Right, but that, that makes, that makes each key, there may be several different keys throughout the building. Because if you as the administrator can open the front door and your door, you can't open the assessor's office.
That's correct.
So that's a different key that they're going to receive. It's keyed differently.
Right, each person will have one key.
Right, but we want multiple keys, first of all. I'm assuming we're getting multiple keys, not just a key for a.
Well, we're getting a master keys, which we talked about the meeting. So I thought we had already set up the master key issue, which was public safety. And one master key here, I think, to be kept in the police station.
But then, but so, but my point is we want multiple keys of every key that's made, so that one can stay in a lock box in case we ever have to duplicate it. We'd have one as this, one as a, give it, give one to the person who needs the key. One as a backup key in the lock box, and one that's in the lock box and goes nowhere unless it needs to be duplicated because of the other two have been lost. But that would be my guess at least to start with the number of keys. We want, we want three keys for every door that's over there that's keyed differently than any other. So if, let's say you have a key to our office and your closet, we want three of those keys. Because we want, you have.
In case the people lose them.
We want a key that you have, we want an emergency key to give out, and we want one that never, ever goes anywhere as a backup to be used for duplication purposes.
Okay, so as a procedure, as a policy.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the duplication will work with a core system. We should check that out. But I understand what you're saying.
The core system, I understand what the core system is, is the core of the lock. They're going to just change them slightly for each door to gain access.
Okay.
So they'll be making cores and keys at the same time in the initial go-around.
And so you want three.
New system, just to highlight what the architect was talking about. New system is not to have a whole lot of keys for each door.
No.
Is to have one key, open the door, you need to get into the building, it is office.
Right.
Now, I think we're on the same page. You're going to do that for department heads. Their keys, open the front door.
Right.
But it's not going to open any other door unless they're involved with that for their office.
So our, our office, Diana will be able to open the front door and our office door and any closets in our facility. But she can't.
If she doesn't have another key to open up all your meeting rooms.
Right.
And like, that would be a separate key.
But then, but then Chrissy has a key for the front door and the assessors. And those two keys aren't going to be.
Treasures.
But those aren't going to be the same key. So that's why we need.
The only thing they'll have in common is they can open the front door.
So they'll be different keys, so we need another key of that, another one of that key in case something happens.
But just getting back to say, just take one office, like Chrissy's office. Now, you're, you're going to have to straighten the title of the department head and the heads of those departments. How many keys are going to be issued to there? You know, like, is there insisting on getting it? So if she's upset, insisting can open up and get in there without creating hassle. You need to set a protocol there. I think that's what you were trying to talk to me the other night about. But the other thing too is, you, you're going to have those issues. But what you're saying is you're going to have a lock box somewhere with all these combinations in there, the backup keys, that you're not going to allow out.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know who the locksmith over there, how it's going to work, but it's usually a specialty alibi that comes in and does this.
Right.
You need to make sure that when you say master keys, there's no more other than that. We had probably that task. And I think Dave can highlight about that. But when you have these backup keys, they really should not leave that box in any circumstance unless they're escorted right back. And if somebody loses a key, you shut your front door open again and you need immediate access to what was lost. You know, so it's important because no matter what key's missing, it's still open to the front door.
Right. Well, if it's a department head key.
That's right. There'll be a select subgroup that could open the front door.
There'll be other keys, like Diana was talking about, like meeting rooms. They shouldn't be open to the front door. They should just be for the meeting rooms. And the janitor will probably have a key that'll open up all the closets and the bathrooms and the doors in between. Because you're going to probably watch that. But, the other thing too is Steve made a comment that he didn't need, imagine, he eventually.
He didn't have a lock box on that building that's worth a master key.
Okay. So he's got one accessible to him on the lock box.
So that's worth a one.
I don't carry that key.
No, it's going to be on the bill.
Lock box on the building, because we have a vendor, we can get it because they have a lock box.
And then Chief Sillinell will also have a key, right? Master key?
Chief Silverman.
Right.
And then there should be one more master in the lock box that goes nowhere, anytime, anywhere.
It shouldn't.
Just that there in case, in case we have to duplicate it at some point or have an emergency or whatever.
So I guess, how do you want to proceed?
I was going to suggest, Diana, if you wouldn't mind, filling this out. You know, because we seem to have a logic. Everybody seems to be in agreement on the procedure.
That's what I wanted to kind of get a sense of.
That people should have access to those areas where they specifically have a reason to be.
And bear in mind, you're going to make a mistake.
Okay, well, I'm going to do it with the depart, I mean, with the staff.
Are you going to issue keys to elected boards?
No.
You know, I mean, think about it. I mean, are they going to be saying, hey, you're going to get in the building for a meeting? You know, how's that going to be arranged?
Sure, that's a good point.
Well, maybe there could be a front door key and a, and a main meeting room key that just has those two doors on it.
Or is there going to be storage in that meeting room that it can't just be left up open for?
No, that, I think we're going to have storage in other, we're not, the goal is not to have any of this kind of storage in the meeting room. We have the hoteling office, we have the meeting room upstairs and plenty of storage.
So I'm saying that that door doesn't have to be blocked. So the only thing they have to do is gain access to the front door, which they have to come to the police department to get the key to go, like we've always done.
Well, there's going to be equipment in there. I don't know how secure, I mean, it's supposed to be permanently attached, but, no, there's going to be more, there's going to be some cable equipment and stuff.
So there you go. You've got to have a key that opens the front door and the meeting room.
Especially when there's no one meeting room.
Right. And then the problem becomes, what are you going to do when there's two meetings? So the, so the meeting rooms are probably going to have to be keyed similarly, so that you can hand out, the front door and a meeting room key's got to be keyed, so there's, and there's got to be more than one in the police department. If the possibility exists that you would have more than one meeting going on. If the possibility exists that you would have more than one meeting going on. So in that situation, you want extra keys, you want four sets or more. Because then you're going to have two that are in the police department, and you still want your one in the, your one secure copy and your one backup copy.
So in a policy also for that backup copy for duplication, would it be that it has to be escorted by two people, something like that?
I mean, I think...
Persons of confidence to get, however they make the duplicates.
No, I think your, duplicates should be done by somebody that's going to be responsible for the key, so there's a control and chain of custody.
So it would be probably an probability of town administrator, I would think.
Do you typically need to have two backup keys? You have one key, let's say you're issuing it to a staff person.
I think they want to have one permanent key always there, never be on that box for any different purposes, but the other key could be used if somebody lost the key.
I mean, can't duplicates be made later, is what I'm saying. Why do we have to have all the keys made and backup keys right now?
They can pay for it.
Yeah, because you pay for them.
Because if they pay to do it now, it's going to be a lot less per key than we go do it.
And it might have been, it may be included in our price.
We'll have to find out more about that.
Because he said nothing about price, so I...
I'm assuming that...
It's in there.
We use specialty outfits to come in and key them.
Right.
Sure.
If you look in your contract, you might have been entitled for ten keys for every door.
Whatever's in the package.
Right, we want it.
Okay.
The only thing I appreciate is somebody who's going to have keys.
Well, this is it.
And how many, how many, is every committee member going to have a key?
Oh, I wouldn't think so.
Policy there. And then you also have a lost key policy that's, you notice this going, but that's...
Because if that, if the master gets lost, it's a portion.
Not master, I'm talking about...
No, but if, but if a front door key, a key that keys the front door, then it's a, it's a horrible expense to rekey that building.
For everybody.
For everybody, because that means every key has to be changed on that door. And it's, you're talking ten, ten thousand dollars.
Chief Hyatt had his hand up first, David, didn't he?
On the master keys in the knockbox, we want three keys in that box, which is when we go into the building.
Oh, so you guys can go in separate, correct?
So we don't have to have one key wandering around the apartment building. We have, actually, we have, hopefully, a lot of knockboxes up ahead of the building.
So you're probably up to like six keys, six masters, three in the knockbox, and then one in the police department, and one... Because you don't have access to the knockbox, do you, Chief? So that, so that doesn't do you any good.
Did you add your hand up as well?
Yeah, just to give you some background and history of this building, one of the problems that has existed is the failure of some appointed persons and elected persons to return keys that they had to the front door when they departed. Uh, and so we've had to have the front door changed on the number of occasions. We have also had in this building a problem with theft in some of the offices, blue select doors offices where files were missing. So the harsh reality is, um, that there's a potential for problems if you have too many keys out there. My recommendation that, like we have it set up now, that you have one or two designated people that have a key to the front door who are town employees, the first person typically here, say that's the town clerk. Whoever's typically here and is going to open up the town hall for the rest of the employees, you should have a designated person to do that. And that's their task. They have a key. Any other keys should be either with the town clerk, who on occasion needs to come in to get death certificates and do things over the weekend. But otherwise, you should really have just one key that's required to be signed out in the dispatch center. Uh, and then you have a history and somewhere to go and start to look if there's something amiss or something that's going on outside of our hours. We had many times here, uh, at odd hours in the evening that someone's in here with lights on. And the officers will go check on and find out whether there's somebody from some board, you know? So, you know, you can have that luxury of the police department being immediately in the same building over there.
Right.
Uh, and it's going to be that much more difficult to keep an eye on tabs on what's going on. So my recommendation would be that you designate one or two people who have keys to the town employees in a responsible position who are designated with opening up the door on the, during regular business hours and locking the door in regular business hours. And then that one other key can be available to any committee member or board member, whoever has an office over there but doesn't really have the necessity to have a front door access. And if there's some reason they have to come there on a evening and, and get caught up or meet a, a citizen to issue a permit, or whatever it may be.
They make arrangements during the day.
That...
They'll have that key to dispatch.
Right, or they can come to dispatch and sign the key out, and they can go conduct their business and then return the key. Um, and then you have complete control and knowledge who's in that building, who isn't in that building. So my suggestion would be, in short, have people have keys to their offices, but not everybody should have keys to that front door. Limit that front door accessibility. Make those people that don't have a legitimate need for a key to come to dispatch and sign the front door key out. Then you'll know who's coming or going.
Yeah, that's very true. We only have six front door keys right now. We have everyone sign off when they get one, and we have them numbered, so we know who has one.
And I just came up with the six. We've got administrator, treasurer, assessors, treasurer, administrator, board of health, building inspector, and town clerk.
Joe Muse has it.
And Joe Muse has it.
And Joe Muse.
So maybe we have seven. I know we have six numbered. Joe, I don't know where Joe's, that was before me, so...
So, so right now, all, right now, those seven people have access to the front door and their office.
Right.
Makes a lot of sense.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah. Thank you for that, Chief Silvene. That's good logic.
Yeah, we don't, that, that's exactly what we're doing now.
That's what we have now. And that was my...
And even that may be true, maybe they want to reduce that number and have some of those folks that don't have a regular need to be in here by themselves or be in the new building by themselves, let them sign it out at dispatch, then you'll know who's doing what and where.
So then the sign out of dispatch would be available to any committee chair or somebody like that, as it is now?
Right, that's right. We, we can have a list drafted of current board and committee members, and they come in to dispatch around the clock whenever they legitimately need it to, and see the dispatcher, and they identify themselves. A dispatcher can verify that on a list of people who are on these boards and committees. And the way we conduct it now is we have a clipboard with various information, including their phone number and their address, when they want to sign a key out. Um, we do the same thing with the, uh, when they want to use the fields or the youth activities that go on, or the nourishment school to have, uh, use the gym and whatnot. And all people sign it out, and then we know who's there.
Mm-hmm, sure.
And they're responsible for bringing it back.
That's right.
That night.
And if they don't, we call them. We'll also, you know, we'll use the lights on.
Right.
Well, it's all on sensors, so hopefully they...
Okay, are the bathrooms locked over there?
Well, the ba, well, all of the rooms, as you can see from the list, are capable of being locked. So, I mean, that will be something that you have to...
If the men's and ladies' rooms are locked, then you need to have multiple, multiple those keys only.
Well, you can have them in the premises, though. People go...
Right, but I'm saying...
But the way that the corridors are set up, there's double doors that lock, so you can actually break up sections of the building as well. So you can, you know, instead of having a whole building open, you could just have the corridor or the meeting room is open on certain times, or, you know, different arrangements like that. There's corridors for the staircases, corridors for the, I mean, doors on the staircases, so you could have the upstairs closed off and locked. You could have the downstairs closed off and locked.
And only meeting rooms accessible in the evening.
Like, like they do sometimes. I don't know if they ever do it at school, but they have double doors, so they could close off the rest of the school from the public.
Does David Kielson have all key again, can you?
Uh, he doesn't have a key to get in the front door, but he has a key to get in his office.
Okay.
So maybe we'll have to scale down the number of people.
Do you want to take a crack at this matrix thing with the sidelines?
Yeah, I'll work with the departments. I mean, with, because I, I mean, the other question is, if you, if a department head, in terms of assistants, do you want all the assistants to have keys to all the offices, or do you want the department heads? Because Eileen asked if her assistant could have a key, so I just wanted you to kind of just think about that instead of policy.
I don't see how you can do that on the initial go-around. The first...
Well, to the office, not the front door, but the offices. I mean, I don't know how you want to, because I mean, before, it was very restricted even on who had keys to the offices. I mean, and I think it still is to some extent, but people just hand, you know...
So then you have a separate key that's going to only open their office that goes to the assistant.
If that's what you decide. That was a question that was asked, so, I mean, that's going to come up.
And you just multiply, not that you've multiplied the number of...
Not front door.
Front door, but you've multiplied the number of people that are holding keys to offices by twice.
Are there some people now that don't have a key to their own office?
I'm thinking that might be the case, but I really, I'm, I'm not sure.
Maybe the departments about that.
There used to be people that didn't have keys to their offices.
So could a department head have custody of two keys and give one out to his or her assistant on a temporary basis?
If you're going to make...
You're going to take this to its extreme, and someone come, someone gets sick tonight at home, they're not coming, they're not coming to work tomorrow, so their assistant now has to go to there to get a key and come.
Unless you, like Jess, you have, well, you have master keys, you're going to have six of them.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You've got a lock, you've got a lockbox, they'd have to come to you.
Or you, you're going to leave one in the police, so you're going to leave one of the master keys with police fire and emergency management.
You're not really...
No, I know you don't want that to be...
That's not a master, and the police will have a master of their own, but the key that gets given out is not a master key to the whole building.
Oh, no, no, no. What, well, to the public safety folks, you're not giving them a master key.
They're getting a master, but a separate key from what's going to be given out to the boys and the women.
Oh, right, no, I understand that. No, of course. Just saying that there will be keys that open every single door.
Right, but that's not a key that's going to circulate to the general public.
No, no, but...
To, to, to anybody.
Right, but I'm just saying in a situation of, you know, emergency or something, you have access to them.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll see what kind of inquiries come up about that, and then you can...
Again, you're going to make mistakes.
Yeah, okay.
There's too many doors over there. Someone's going to say that one...
There's too many doors. Well, I know, and there's joint doors coming from either direction, from corridors and from other offices, so, you know, that's going to be some of the decision-making obstacles.
All righty, well, thanks. Thanks, I appreciate that, Chief Silvene. That makes good sense.
Yes.
So if everybody's okay with this, because we have the three folks who are involved in this item, um, five. Do you want to skip to that, and then we can go back to the executive session? But you've got, I'm sure you have things to do other than...
We have an executive session tonight?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, and you said go back to the executive session?
No, while we're having one on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, basically, what we're looking at here is the possibility of going out and looking for IT service providers, what they call client server providers. Here we have, I think, fifteen workstations here and a server in the town hall. And you, as public safety chiefs, have each your own separate systems, which in some cases are interlinked, I believe, or is through radio. So, um, you also have, at this point, I'm aware of, separate contracts with a service provider. And the town hall is in the process right now of looking at another service provider, because our service provider happens to be the same as yours, decided to resign from this contract. It wasn't really a contract, it was an agreement to provide the work on an hourly basis. So as part of our RFP, as we are putting out the scope of work for a potential IT service provider, we wondered if you three or some combination of you wanted to go in on this such that the scope of work would, frankly, would change. It would get bigger. So the service, we might achieve some economies of scale in that. So the questions would be whether or not you have an exit clause in any existing contracts that you may have, and/or do you want to participate in this?
I think, uh, right now, the provider that I'm using, Chief Silvene, I'm very satisfied since the beginning from him. And, uh, I don't have a contract with him. I pay him on a basis of, like, once a year, I usually have him come in, just through my system, to make sure that he's operating properly, and if I need to pay anything, he'll update it. And he doesn't tie me to a contract to do that service, so it's very inexpensive for me. The other part of that contract agreement, I don't have it, because I do a lot of computer work myself. I can take care of a lot of my own problems, and I can't take care of some problems that I am able to call this person and he'll give me information and hold the phone, so I can usually fix the problem myself. So I save the town a lot of money to make part of that one. If I have a major meltdown with one of my systems, I did probably two years ago, he had to come in and reconfigure my computer. It cost me about just under five hundred dollars, and it's the biggest expense that I've ever had since a rebuilding loan, which even if we had a contract with anybody, they still would charge something. They would demand, but they would still charge a fee similar to that to repair that problem. So I don't, unless it's something that's, uh, going to, you know, be as financially adequate as what we have right now. I, I really don't. We'd have somebody that's in service for the town, gives us a good deal, and is a competent person. I'm not against it. But right now, what I'm saying is that I have somebody that takes care of my system very adequately at a very inexpensive price. So the town is saving a lot of money to repair that asset.
How many units do you have, Chief?
Right.
How many units have you...
I've got three stations.
Three stations.
And I have a server.
And, and do we budget you a separate line item for, for fire computers?
No.
So where, where do you...
My money comes out of the, if it's related to the ambulance, comes out of my ambulance expenses or my fire expenses.
Do you have uni, do you have units that are specifically for ambulance? Or are they all...
I have a server, which basically all of my EMS information is still on the server, so that three workstations can, can work on the same cloud.
But none of the stations is dedicated to the ambulance?
Specifically, it's the fire department.
So the question becomes, can we transfer? Take, you don't have a line item, so can we create a line item that covers all the departments and budget out? That way you can get a better economy of scale. Take it out of the department's budgets and bring it into an administrative budget.
Except I would venture to say that Steve and Ed don't really have a budget per se. I mean, they take it out of their general budget.
Right, but I'm saying we can create a...
Right. Yeah, we could, we have a technology budget that, um, we've been using. I mean, I don't, I think, for Ed and Steve, I haven't used it, but I've used it for the town hall and the police department.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. I understand that the chief is satisfied, but if we can achieve some scales and still have him satisfied, then that may be the, the way to go.
Right, and say, I'm, I'm looking for something that's going to be as efficient and as cost-effective as what I have now.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm concerned. I have no problem going over on this. We use Jason right now. It's paid for. Uh, two funds, the highway department, it's used as paid for highway department, but they, they, same, we have two computers in there, two stations. They link together and they function together, and they print together. And they, uh, the other, they're both used for water, I think, so we divide it down in like fifty-fifty. Both enterprise budget space are happening this year.
Well, something...
I'm not opposed to coming in this, um, on what we do, but we don't call or see, we've had some crashes. Jason's been very good about it, but we have an ongoing, um, I have an ongoing understanding that he monitors ours once a week from a remote station, make sure there's nothing coming in, and that is suffice not having added crashes if that happen. That's probably fifteen hundred and two thousand.
Do we have a backup on your computers?
On mine, yeah. And, and we back it every day. Part of the service is a backup.
Or his service is backup.
Okay. Chief Silvene, how about yourself?
Well, Chief Harbin has about twelve computers plus a server. Prior to the IT vendors we have now, we had a lot of problems with the computer system. We had a lot of crashes, and crashes at nighttime or on weekends are catastrophic for us. Because society's become so computer dependent, we can't even handwrite a complaint to go to court for Monday morning. Everything has to be generated on the computerized complaints. So we have to have, um, twenty-four hour computer accessibility. The fellow that we have now has a unique experience and expertise in the public safety software that we have. He worked for the company prior to going off on his own, um, and so he's, you know, done a very good service as far as keeping our systems up and running. While it may be true that this year, um, he hasn't been as timely as he has in the past on getting ahold of us or returning calls as they relate to non-emergency calls for service. He has always been there rapidly when we've had emergency calls for service. So I'm satisfied overall with the job he's been doing for the police department, and just the reliability of the system speaks for itself. So if the board is going to be looking at other IT vendors in the future, um, and the agreement that I have with him for FY eleven, and the agreement that I have with him for FY eleven goes actually, the agreement that I had with him a few years ago was a written contract. There is no bio clause or no exit. It's not really addressed. It's more or less some loose terms that if either party wants to end it, it can be ended. That said, we want to make sure that we are looking at someone who is very proficient in this public safety software and has twenty-four-hour response for service availability.
Okay. All right, thanks. Appreciate that. So what option for us might be then, to go out for something for the rest of this fiscal year with somebody on a trial basis, and then get together again prior to the next fiscal year starting, and see how we're all doing. Is it a possibility?
Yes, there's just, I mean, I talked with Mike last week when we had the, at the learning school in the town hall. I don't know what the dollar mark is, what it comes up with, but what's the possibility of hiring an IT person that's here on a dedicated hour? I mean, you're not bringing anybody forty hours, but is there a dedicated, if somebody could come in this building every week, plus emergency backup on an emergency basis, is that another way of looking at this?
Yeah, we're over about fifteen.
Twelve, twelve thousand we pay.
If you also look at what the schools already have, I mean, what does Norris have for IT support? Would they, would it be somebody that's already, do they have an IT person?
I'm just asking, or the regional?
Yeah, they use the regional. They use the one from the regional.
And if you're talking more about some bulk daily stuff, maybe that person could be like that. And then, do we need just one person? I mean, if we find, we need individual that works with the safety side. Can we keep that individual?
Well, I'd say we certainly don't want to sacrifice what the chief has, but if we can do it as well, is the question, and we're probably in an ideal situation. We can go out with everybody but the police for now, and hang a carrot in front of the vendor, saying if you do a good job, you may be able to get the chief if you can satisfy all of it, all the requirements specifically for the police department, and see what we can get for this go-round, and see what's out there.
We are aware that East Hampton has a guy who works four days a week, and he's very busy, according to Mayor Mike over there. We talked with him recently about all this situation. See if we could get him to come over for a day, a week.
Do they maintain the school computers too?
I don't know that. I notice the safety.
Probably because they're all one, they're all under, they don't have a regional, so they're probably all through the, I imagine, maybe. They have a full IT department.
So that they probably do maintain this.
It's like they do.
Because they're cut off from that large. I think maybe it's a good thing, but this gives us an idea of what we're sending out. I mean, we got three servers and.
Did you do a?
That's helpful.
We're working on that right now. So we have three servers and five, plus fifteen here, twenty workstations.
You gotta do more than five, because chief's got three.
Yeah, twenty.
And three and a server.
Yeah, three and a server, two and a server, fifteen.
Oh, and I was thinking of the chief.
No, he's, he's got twelve, but he's on a. So there'll be twenty workstations and three servers.
With the potential for one more server and however many.
Twelve stations.
Twelve more stations. If someone can do this right.
Right, but as chief said, you have some very specific software.
I got a bit of software interface with the public police department, it's also interfacing with the registry. You know, we've got laptops and cruisers, there's interface there. There's a lot of unique things that you have to have somebody that really knows the system and knows the software to be able to keep it up and running.
But there has to be other people out there, because there's, every town has a police department, and there's multiple police departments in some areas.
That's right.
So someone's gotta be out there that knows how to do this.
Right.
Someone's gotta be servicing this small town.
Okay, so again, we do have this, should something go wrong with the system tomorrow, we actually are at peril in a sense, because we don't have anybody that we can bring.
Well, I have somebody. I have, I know somebody personally that I met through a friend, who actually has a business in town, I've known him for the past three years. And he actually works for the town of Justice Field and Ashland. Via this corporate house. And I spoke to him on the side, I didn't say he was a definite position, but Joel said that he'd be interested in helping if needed, and I gave that number to Diana. So his office is actually in town at Red Rock Plaza.
Right, I read about it the other day.
And he has municipal experience as well.
Did we take care of that problem that was out there?
We're working on it tomorrow. There was no phone service today in the town hall, so tomorrow Reggie is supposed to have a conversation with Softrite, which is the software that he uses for payroll.
What happened to the policy statement?
It was an outage. It wasn't just the town.
Box over there, someone, they weren't, it wasn't just the town hall.
The town hall had problems.
Town hall.
Okay.
Both issues are restored by now. But do you want to contact Joel? Just for emergency backup in case, if there's something should happen? Tonight, tomorrow, or whatever?
Yes.
We've still got a problem with the bid process.
Well, it's under five thousand right now, the town hall section of this, the fifteen workstations and the one server, has been historically under five thousand.
I mean, even between the fire, highway, and the town hall, it's under five thousand, or just about under five.
But just to have an.
And then you might get a better price.
Right. Okay. All right, sounds good. So appreciate that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, so I'll drop the scope of service, and then I'll give you a list of, I do have a list going of people, of possible candidates, and then we can talk more about, you know, proceed.
Good. Thanks very much. Appreciate your input on that, chief. All right, so then moving backwards. Yeah, anything else that you want to bring up? Open time for the public as well.
Well, I wasn't here until last time, and I'm just gonna tell you, I'm in support of you guys. I would love to see you guys reconsider people that can be racist. And I know you talked about it, the rules and things, but it's still out there, still morale issue for many people involved. And I just hope you people don't close the door on that. If some plan became available, I really hope that you do something. Morale is an issue. That's affecting personnel that haven't been treated, and I consider it being an issue right now.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Well, I know it's not, the new bylaws are, the open meeting. I just have a comment. There was a request in the audit for Hampshire Regional. We received that, but then we got the master recommendation. And there's a recommendation for improving mayor efficiency within the, they haven't done yet, and they've actually asked, been recommended to it two years in a row, twice. And it was, I forget how they worded it. Do you recall how they worded it? I can pull it up on this. The way they worded it was that, you know, the school committee should be, just giving us that, I apologize.
We're talking about the Hampshire Regional School Committee right now, not the Norris School.
But in general, but it's just, again, when Mike and I are talking about possible two and a half override for budget stuff, we always, your comment was, I want to see more efficiency. So eight million dollars is, is a chunkable piece of our budget, and talking about efficiency regarding that would be an important issue. And I'm stalling. Well, here it is. It's management letter to Hampshire Regional School District. And let's see if I can pull it up. And it talks about the recommendations that, that they would like to see occur.
Who would like to see occur?
The auditors.
Auditors.
The auditors. And it basically comes up with, I can't pull it up on my iPhone, but it basically comes up to being more accountable to procurement and cost efficiency within the school system that has been requested before, and they actually go through what deficiencies they haven't done, and they still haven't done. It was that, it was requested last time they had the audit, and it was still not done the second time. So I think if we're looking at cost-saving measures within our community, not punitive, but trying to develop more efficient ways of funding different things, I think it would be important to see if we couldn't ask the school committee to relook at that, to see if that's something that they would like to pursue, especially in this economic context.
When do, when do we get together, when's the opportunity to get together with the Hampshire Regional Committee?
Well, there's the.
I mean, when is that part of?
Well, you have your, you have your own elected representatives that you could come, have us to come and speak with you at any time about the Hampshire Regional. And then, there used to be, every year, they used to have, the selectmen would get together, that M Mac or H Mac or whatever.
The H Mac.
Yeah, the H Mac. That's somewhat been defunct in the last couple of years, but they do have, when the budget starts, they, they'll have, you know, some meetings.
So we would have to re-initiate that communication.
Sometime in February, March, they'll start again, as they try and put the.
Unless you want to reach out to your, to your South Hampton reps to, you know, to talk about the audit with them, and have them take that back to the full committee.
I mean, the other thing is to go to the other four towns, who are part of the regional schools, say, hey, look, we're not trying, again, this is, I'm not against schools, I'm just facing the reality that we have to be more efficient. And if the auditor is saying, we need to do this, and we've asked you to do it before, but you still haven't done it, that sort of says maybe you should do that, from our standpoint, from the elected officials of each town. I mean, going to the other selectmen or sending letters, are you aware of this? Is this something that you would be interested in pursuing to, you know, develop more efficient funding within the regional?
So specific steps then, David?
I'd like my iPhone to be able to pull it up, so we're just gonna get one, but I can't.
I think the audit overall, though, was a positive audit. I, I think, didn't you understand from that correspondence that the audit in general, overall, was a positive audit? But these were recommendations.
This is not negative.
No, I'm not, but I'm gonna clarify.
Well, the audit always, if you list your accounts in a certain way, you're given a positive audit recommendation. The management.
And they go within all the boundaries and all the standard.
Sure, for the fiscal reporting information, yes. The management letter is what the auditor sees as procedural and operational issues that could be.
Improved.
Improved. And in fact, you, I also, in that email, sent you a copy of our recent audit, and we have some as well, that I'm hoping you'll address as part of your policy discussion.
And I think part of the, and bringing this up now, again, is, I meant to mention as well as in the context of meeting with finance and talking about policies, one of the policies could be to get a copy of the regional audit every, whenever it's done, in the management letter. That should be a policy. We should get a copy of that, because we need to see what else we can do. Again, it needs time to settle. And again, and it's not negative or positive, it's just, this is what the recommendations were from an outside agency.
So you're thinking that this Hampshire Regional could find efficiencies that would, in the end, help with the South Hampton town budget? That there would be some, some impact that we could make that would accrue then positively to our budget? I presume that's the link.
In general, positive to all five towns.
To reduce our assessments, if they could use.
Every dollar that they save is fifty cents of its ours.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we do. So I mean, it's just, and it's better for the schools, they're more efficient. Maybe they can save money in the way they're buying stuff, maybe they can save a position. Our position here, policy here, is always trying to save a person's job while trying to get more efficient. We've tried to do that for the past few years. Maybe within doing this, what the management letter recommended, would help them look back, so you wouldn't have to have teacher layoffs or things like that. So my, my, I guess what I'm saying is, we'd like to get my iPhone to work, so I can get you guys to read that, if you haven't received it. And then have that with us, we'll need to meet with finance for the policy.
So finance also thought that was a good idea.
Well, we'll hear from them when we meet with them.
But I did send it to the finance committee and the board, so I have all of that information.
And maybe taking your point to another level, is whether or not we get the H Mac or whatever that committee was talking, was back functioning again. Because that's your chance to talk to the selectmen and finance committee from all the other towns. The problem is, you know, they don't all show up on the same night. You know, it's hard to get five towns, I don't know how many selectmen you're talking about, but you're probably talking about fifteen or twenty, at a meeting on a given night.
But the, I think that the, that audit and those specific recommendations are something that they can, everyone's sort of a tangible thing that everyone can kind of get around and talk about. I think we've tried to get the H Mac, have an H Mac meeting the last couple of years. We've tried to organize it, if you remember. I don't know if you remember, like, the string of emails for every, like you said, getting all those people together at one time, because the selectman meetings are different, finance committee meetings are different. But I really think that there's been, you know, there hasn't really been a really strong desire to do that, because there hasn't really been an issue, a specific issue, that everyone, I mean, it was always sort of the budget, like, but everyone was kind, there's some towns that are paying less.
Well, I'm saying. Everybody sits there, lets them do their budget, because they hope that this is the year.
That's right.
This is the year we don't get punished.
Exactly.
That's a common divide mentality.
Right. But in terms of this, not only are there, is there an opportunity for the regional to be more efficient, you know, in and of itself, but for a couple of years, we've been talking about, as a town, our, our town accounting, our interaction with the regional and the local, you know, in terms of process. Because there's a lot of, I don't want to say duplication, but there's a lot of layers involved with, you know, them giving the bills to us, and us processing the bills, and then sending them back, and them cutting the checks, and then sending them back, and, you know, a lot of back and forth, which to me, and speaking with David Killson a couple of years ago about it, you know, just seems redundant and excessive, like, to be kind of going back and forth. Now, it's always been, you know, there's been, there's checks and balances that need to be met, but, you know, maybe there is a way, like you said, we're fifty percent of that, so like, we have a lot of bills from Hampshire Regional, we have a lot of checks that we cut, so there is a cost to the town on that respect as well.
All right. Well, we have to do better. Obviously, we failed this year in conveying our wishes to the local school board. So next year, we have to do a better job of conveying our wishes, although I thought we were clear. But obviously, it was subject to interpretation. So we, we have a communication issue, and it's these various layers of government that clog up that communication, you know, going up the chain.
And it's communication and setting goals, and what are limits in our, in terms of authority. I mean, obviously, with other selectors, you're working within, you're compounding, you know, our perspective isn't necessarily theirs.
Well, no, because everybody sits there and says that this is the year we're not gonna get hit. So let's, let's let it go.
And I think from a workload perspective, what I found trying to schedule those meetings is that it's very difficult. All the boards, all the finance committee, and all the school administration, and the town administration are very, very busy. So then trying, this is a whole sort of other layer of trying to collaborate and trying to get everybody together. You know, that might only happen like twice a year, so you really have to be succinct in what you're trying to accomplish.
If we think we have little enough authority with the local school budget, take it out one more step to the regional, and we've got.
That's right.
But I think the strength actually lies in the elected officials of various towns.
Absolutely.
If you get buy-in from the board of selectmen, from the other towns, yes, this is a good thing, and then next.
We want to organize a coffee night some night here? Invite the other committees down?
It would be, it would be good to.
It has to be, it has to be done a non-confrontational manner, that, well, because we're trying to help.
Coffee.
Coffee. Seven o'clock coffee.
Decaf.
But I'm just saying, if you're gonna do that step, then you gotta ask them to come down, and if you, if you get good participation, then you can do something. And if it shows up one or two people, then.
Why don't we try to organize a meeting, but do it earlier? I mean, last year, we did try, but it was late. So maybe if we try now, to basically talk about the audit, which has just come out.
And then the meeting itself actually was sort of overtaken by the school, sort of just giving their pitch, where we.
You can't let them hijack the meeting.
Right.
Which is why you asked, you asked them to come here, along with the school committee, the school administration.
Because we tell the school, and they're gonna show up. But what happened last time is we couldn't, I couldn't even get two or three of the towns together. I mean, the selectmen together.
It was us and like one other town.
Right, yeah, we, we.
So why don't, why don't you want to form the.
Just start there, that'd be great.
Hampshire Regional High School Selectmen Audit Committee. And you, I elect you chairman. Before you get a chance to.
I'm treasurer and clerk.
You might as well take that audit out, just for, we just have coffee and not a throw in.
I hear, just, I know what you, but I still say that the first step is to send a letter of.
Send a letter and ask them to come.
Could you receive this? This is what was recommended by an outside agency.
And we'd like to.
What do you think about that? What are your concerns?
We're having coffee to discuss that issue. Come on down.
And if you don't get a response, send another letter, or one we should go to one of their selector meetings?
You gotta, you ask them to come, and you test their dedication by asking them to come.
Because out of all of them, out of all the members of each group, one person should be able to come. Or two.
Almost every member's five, five.
Can I say something?
Almost all of them are three, I think.
You're on the agenda, so we can't.
Yeah, we honestly should be. I know we've let this go on a little bit, because technically, the end of the.
Sorry, Jim, I truly apologize.
For not following. For not following protocol.
But put it on the agenda for next time, and we'll do it. You can select the invitations. You can kick off.
I think we will elect you.
Okay. All right. So town administration reports, and we're going backwards again, we're at four to approve master plan committee appointments, which are in your, I guess so.
Yes, they're in your packet, page two. The only changes are highlighted, and Chuck is actually not Charlie, that's, question's been asked a lot of times, Chuck is Chuck Charlie Junior. He's going to be the new liaison from Energy Committee, replacing Craig Izzard. And John Martin, that's a new addition from the Finance Committee. Hank thought that it would be helpful to have a member from Finance, so John agreed to sit as a liaison.
So we're appointing these two people to the master planning committee?
Yes, as the liaison from those committees.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And this coming Thursday, I'm going to ask Doug if he can, or if anybody else here could attend the meeting, which is here on my behalf, because I'll be in Boston that night.
And I'll be here too.
This is the master plan?
Yes. Okay, just a quick heads up, also in the stack of materials, it says here, policy on materials to be provided to new select board members. Just wanted to draw your attention to this. Nobody, this is an extract, this is pages sixty-one through sixty-six.
Business cards.
Town of Long Meadow, Select Board, Town Manager Policies.
Were you able to help him?
He had a neck wallet. So he actually returned page, the page to page sixty-two, where it starts with budget policies of the Long Meadow Select Board. And we've taken a look at these, and Bob Blanchett has looked at these also, as has the Finance Committee, and these actually, rather than reinvent the wheel, they're some very well thought out, I'm not saying that you just willy-nilly pick these, but I'd like everybody just to take a look at these, and when we do meet with the Finance Committee at the library in October, that we'll at least have some familiarity with these issues. Simple as that. Okay, moving on to...
What's the thing about Camp John?
That was a new manager.
New manager, it's done.
He was actually the manager in any case, the effective acting manager. Upcoming events, sorry?
As we're the Looker Commission.
Oh, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, so we had to sign it for that. We talked with the chief, and there's been no significant problems there. Upcoming events and meetings, Select Board meeting September twenty-eighth, the executive session, this has to do with talking with the union representative for the police unions.
So twenty-eight is back on.
Right.
Yes.
He's voiding that thing out and coming back on, okay, seven p.m.
And just please note that you also do have that meeting on October twelfth, it's not listed, but you're actually now meeting next week, October fifth, October twelfth, and October nineteenth, so the next four weeks.
The twelfth meeting is the meeting we will attend, as a board will attend the Finance Committee meeting at the library?
Right, that's right.
Fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-seven?
Yes.
Twenty-sixth?
So far. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, anything further? Oh, I did have an agenda, okay.
First question, please, hold there. Are they currently still, are they all contracted and stuff?
Yeah.
What about the window?
Still up in negotiations.
Okay, anything further? Take a motion to adjourn?
Public, did you give...
Yeah, I did. Nothing, Carter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the folks at home, and those in favor of the adjournment.